Know of that will not be here?
No.
Well, I'll go ahead and start then if everyone's good with that. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I think we're finally right near here, the end of the reviewing all of these ordinances and all. I'm sure we're all excited about that, but thanks to Karen and all her crew. But let's take a quick minute and to approve the minutes from the October 21st meeting. Did everyone receive those by email? Any, are there any changes, corrections or additions to those? Okay, if none, can I entertain a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Okay, we have a second.
All second.
Okay. I'm glad you were able to be here, Alan. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Say, oh, we need to do a roll call, sorry.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes. Okay. Do we have any public comment? I don't know of anything. Okay, if not, we'll go right on to the ordinances and I'll I'll turn it over to Karen.
Thank you. As, as always, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you so much for having us. We are in that final, there is a light at the end of the tunnel and we are almost ready to start using this version of the zoning and subdivision ordinance. So what the game plan is for tonight is I have a presentation, it's going to go through some of the things that have changed since we've discussed last and then sort of where we need to go moving forward and some of this is required by 160D when we talk about some of the consistency. So that's going to be the majority of what our discussion is going to be about tonight. But if at any point you have any questions, you want to stop me, please do so. Also, we're going to go over some of the background information just because this is the precursor sort of with the public hearing and I want to just make sure that everyone has an understanding of the why we're doing this and how it's come to the point where we are now where we're almost ready for adoption. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, hoping everyone can see that, okay? Excellent. Okay, so here we are. One, one second. Oops, sorry, wrong one. Leave that over here. Okay. Let's see if this goes. Okay, so here's our project team. You've met us all before. You've seen all of our faces before. I'm the project manager on this. Daniel Rao is my partner in crime. He did a lot of the actual ordinance writing. And he is the master of getting things done. So he helps me on the presentations and getting like the details. He's really detail oriented. So a big huge shout out to Daniel, even though he's not on the call tonight, I would like to, you know, show my appreciation to him. And Brandy Vega is our planning director and is a wonderful resource for all things planning related. So again, just like to, if you guys have not met them, that's the rest of the team. An overview again of what we're going to do this evening. These are our change, we're just going to go over the changes that have happened with the ordinance from your current wording, the changes that were required by the 160D update. We're going to take a look at the zoning map because we just haven't looked at that in a long time. So we're going to go back and revisit that real quick. There's no changes to it, but we're just going to go back over that. And then we're going to review some of the specific items that have changed since the document was drafted. You know, we got the draft in December and then what we talked about at our last joint workshop meeting. So we're going to talk about some of those changes that have happened in the last week. And then we're going to go over again, the bigger chunk of this is the consistency with the land use plan. And then what are our steps moving forward? So first thing, we're going to go over the overview of these changes, what has happened. So why change? Why do we have to do this? So first off, the town underwent an ordinance assessment about, I think it's about two years ago at this point, which outlined a number of the significant changes that were going to happen to the ordinance. This was a very well-written document. It was made our job a lot easier to come in and sort of make these changes. And some of those changes were the ordinance organization and structure, how it was going to be laid out, how was it going to be formatted? Talked about adding in tables and charts, talked about the design standards that they wanted to, that, you know, you wanted to see in not only your downtown, but throughout the community. Also, it gave a very specific list of article by article list of changes and the content it wanted in each one of those. So it said in article one, we're going to put this, 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 and this. In article two, we're going to talk about the role that everyone plays. In article three, we're going to talk about the procedures. So it was very specific in giving us a backbone to how we organize the ordinance. And then there were very specific findings and recommended changes that we went through line by line and incorporated into this ordinance. Next, we're going to talk about the statutes, the things that changed with 160D. So again, for those of you who may or may not have been on the board when we started this process, 160D was instituted and required all communities that do zoning to update their zoning ordinances by July 1st. So we're a little past that deadline. However, this was a work in progress before the July 3rd, July 1st deadline. So we are just making this, you know, sort of retroactive to come up, not retroactive to the date of July 1st, but sort of just working a little bit to get this, you know, approved as soon as possible. The other, the main, the main things with 160D is that it consolidated and combined the ordinances for counties and the ordinances for towns and in once, like where they were, they were in 160A and 153A. And those were almost redundant, but also sometimes opposite each other. So there was a lot of conflicts that they resolved with the creating of 160D. And now they're applicable to both counties and cities. It also talked about the fact that future land use plans or comprehensive plans have to be instated. Some towns don't even have them, but they either have to be instated or updated by July 1st of this year. So sort of a little backwards in the whole planning realm. Usually you do a comprehensive plan first and then you do your zoning ordinance. But the way that the states actually was, was that zoning ordinances needed to be updated first. So here we are. And then those important elements in 160D were definitions were updated. They got rid of special exceptions and conditional uses and now they're referred to as special uses. So you'll see that as SUP a lot in our zoning ordinance. Conditional zoning districts are now allowed. We'll talk about that a little bit. That gives you the flexibility in your design. It updated conflicts of ordinance, of, I'm sorry, conflicts of interest and oaths of office. It created a process for minor modifications once an approval has been granted. It allows for permit choice and vested rights and that refers to the rights of developers once an application has been submitted or approved. It talks about an expedited subdivision approval and then performance guarantees. So, so some of these are new or refined with 160D. All right, I'll just take a quick break there. I see a hand. Jeffrey?
Unmute. There we go. Speaking of conflicts of interest oath of office, I was noticing it, it's kind of a typo kind of thing, but section 25, 2.5B. It, it says the, the CBA, but it says the zoning, excuse me, it says the planning board, but it's under the section of the ZBA. So I think you should probably modify that language a little bit.
Thank you. I will take a look at that. I appreciate.
I noticed that one too, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, I, I love typo. I don't love typos. I mean, I just, thank you for calling them to our attention. We'll get that fixed. Okay. All right. If you see any of those else, just again, stop me and let me know. Any other questions regarding 160D? Okay, let's move on then. Okay, so what were the changes that were specific to Silva? So again, we're talking about 160D, which was universal throughout the state, but then what changes in your ordinance were very specific to what you were doing? So again, we, a lot of this followed that ordinance assessment, but basically these are the summary of the changes. So it was reorganized, consolidated and renamed your zoning districts. So right now you'll have like an R1, R2, R3, and then you have an R1A and an R1B. What we did is that is really sort of like a pyramid zoning. So basically you have your, your R1 is your least intensive zoning district and then everything in R1 is allowed in R2 and then everything that's in R2 is allowed in R3. And same with your business districts, everything that was allowed in B1 is allowed in B2 and then down. So we eliminated that and then created zoning district names that were more closely related to what they actually are. So we have your, you know, downtown businesses DTB. Your residential districts are low, medium and high density districts. Then we also went and we removed under each one of your districts right now in the ordinance are the uses and the dimensional standards for each one of those districts. So we've removed those and that uses have their own chapter and dimensional standards have their own chapter. So we've taken that out. And also by removing a lot of the uses and creating those own articles, in essence, we've been able to create supplemental standards. So we pulled, like I said, we pulled those uses out of the individual districts and put them into a sort of a table. And then in the table, you can sit there and see what required an SUP or special use permit previously, or was a conditioning permit previously. And then realizing that all of these uses were only permitted by CUP. So then we've, there was that decision very early on in the process to go to the supplemental standards, which allows more administrative approvals if they meet these standards right off the bat. So then we go down here and these are some of the summary tables that we've created. Again, the ordinance assessment really wanted the creation of tables and charts. And we really wanted to make those accessible in each one of the chapters. So you'll see the procedures in chapter three has a table, signs in chapter eight has a table. The use table is probably the most, will be the most discussed. That's in chapter five. And I'm sorry, I say chapters, but article five. And then the dimensional standards are in article four. Okay, other changes that were specific to the Silva ordinance that we updated the development standards, including the subdivisions, we requiring open space landscaping sidewalks, buffering. Again, they were there, but we just made them a little bit more easy to read, easier to find and in a consistent, you know, consistent with, from development to development. Talked about increasing design standards throughout the community, not just in your downtown. So we've taken some of those architectural elements and brought them throughout the community. So it's not just, again, just for your downtown. Talking about the, the use of native species in landscaping on all new development. And then we added in a commercial corridor overlay, which essentially replaces your R3, I'm sorry, your B3 uses to promote shared driveways, pedestrian access, safety, and then again, specific design elements. All right. Any questions before we go on to the zoning map? I don't see everyone on my little screen because I have to scroll through everyone. So if someone has their hand raised, I may not see you. You'll have to yell at me. So I don't, I don't mind. Just stop me if I need to. All right. So here is our zoning map. This is the proposed zoning map. It might look a little different than what's existing in terms of the colors, but again, we just consolidated. We really did not change any of the zoning lines. All the zoning lines are basically the same as what is currently zoned. We just had a transition from those districts. You can find a chart in chapter four, I'm sorry, article four that goes over the specific translation of what goes to what. So again, the downtown business was your B1. You're going to see that here in the salmon color in the middle of town. Your general business is all the red. So those are your commercial uses. And then down here, I don't know, you probably can't see it. It's a very, sorry, this is small, but hopefully we each got a copy today. If not, don't worry, that'll be coming for soon enough. There's a commercial corridor overlay that has a diagonal hash and that is all over everything along the 107 corridor. So that's what will be subject to those different rules and regulations that are included in article four. The professional business is the same that has not changed from your current ordinance. Your industrial and institutional uses, again, very similar. And then again, the biggest difference is the consolidation of your residential zoning districts. So your R1 and your R1A have gone to pretty much your low density residential. Your R1B and your R2 have gone to the medium density residential with this mustardy color. And then the high density residential is your R3. Actually, I think it's R3 and R1B are in your orange. And that's again, your high density residential. Okay. So again, I, you have had, you should have had a copy of this from a while back, but we just again, sent it out today and we're bringing it up tonight just so that you can understand, you know, the changes that were in there. Again, there's a little chart in article four that will tell you the exact transition to it. We also provided staff at the town this week, side by side comparison of the old zoning for residential to the new zoning for residential, in case a resident has a question that we can answer it very quickly in terms of what might have changed or what hasn't changed. A lot of it has just stayed the same. We just changed the names. Okay. And then what has changed? So when I say new as of January, we changed some things and we talked about some of these. For those of you who were at the workshop meeting last week, we talked about some of these, some of these are not, but you should have received an updated memo when you got the, or a memo that outlined all the changes when you got your new drafts of the ordinance. We'll go very quickly through some of those changes. So the items that were outlined in that memo again, was sent with the draft just this past week. We cleaned up a lot of some of those typos. We took out a lot of the bold and the underlines and the strike throughs that you had seen that we were using to track our changes throughout this entire process. So some of the things that changed, again, we saw that there was a reference to the planning board in the quasi judicial processes. We've tried to take that out. We realized in chart 34, which is the process chart in article three, there were two lines that were colored. And those were the quasi judicial ones. So we removed the coloring from the middle of that chart. And we also realized that there was a strike through in the planning board, but we hadn't actually removed it. So that has been updated as of today. Some of the other things that we went through, each of the articles, I'm going to go, they're basically broken down by article. So article one, we revised the transition wording for the PUD. So we removed the PUD district. So it was an RPUD district currently, and that became the R, the high density residential. There was no development actually happening in the RPUD. That was an RPUD development. And with the creation of conditional zoning, we feel that the conditional zoning will be able to handle those types of development. So RPUD is still sort of transitioned to a use rather than a district. So we just changed the transitional language in article one. Article four, we added in the new illustrations. Hopefully you have gotten a chance to see those. We revised the definition or the measurement of building height and the definition of some of the setbacks. So for front, side and rear setback, there were some clarifications made. And we defined and created standards for each of the, or for some of the different lot types, such as a flag lot, a through lot and our standard, our standard lots are what is generally regulated. We also updated the language for uses not listed, sorry, for use, ah, sorry, the mouse is very sensitive. We updated the language for uses not listed. So it, how it was previously written in the draft was that if a use was not listed in the use table, it was prohibited. And we didn't really want to prohibit a use. You know, that leaves yourself open for you know, possible litigation. So we wanted to just make sure that the process is fought, the process is there. So how that will happen is if a use comes in, so it's not specifically mentioned in the ordinance, that goes to the zoning administrator who uses a very specific methodology to determine the use that is most like it. If he or she cannot determine at the time of application, a use that is similar, it will go before the board of adjustment. All right. Some of the other changes in article five, we updated the language for accessory dwellings requiring additional lot area for detached units. That was something that is in your current ordinance that we had not really carried over. But if there is a detached, so again, you'll remember that we have accessory dwellings as well as accessory structures. An accessory dwelling that is a standalone building will have to follow also accessory structure guidelines as well. And those standalone or detached accessory dwellings will have to provide additional lot area over and above what is required by the zoning district in which it's located. You'll see that, I'll skip one for a second, go to the third bullet. That same sort of language was incorporated for multifamily uses. Again, for every unit over two, they will have to add an additional 5,000 square feet of lot area to the base required zoning. And that is again, language that is in your current ordinance that we just carried over. Going back to the second bullet, there is a new use that was created since December and that's for RV parks and campgrounds. That was added to not only the use table, but then there was a list of supplemental standards that was included. And in article seven and article four, we wanted to address some additional buffering and screening of uses where that might present itself because of changes to parking. So with this ordinance requirement, we're asking that parking not be provided in the front, that parking be provided to the side and rear of buildings, especially in the commercial corridor overlay. And with that, that creates interesting design issues as to how do patrons enter the building, where do you put your loading and where do you put your storage areas? So the intent is that the buildings will all face the front of the street and allow for pedestrian access. And then we're requesting, you know, an interesting use of landscaping, fencing, walls, architectural features such as false facades and maybe even window treatments to address that. Jeffrey, I see your hand up, sorry.
Hi, thank you. Since we're talking about screening in this, these articles, and I hope I'm not bringing this too late to this game, but I was talking to some people just recently about, you know, the planning board, what are you guys doing? And so I kind of gave a thumbnail of, of this process and what one of them brought up and I thought, oh wow, I don't even remember even talking about this. And when I was thinking of, you know, utility areas, I was thinking of, they brought up the proliferation of utility poles and service wires around town and thought that they were ugly and overheat up to put it bluntly and didn't know what, if we were doing anything about that or trying to minimize that kind of thing with either underground utilities or alternatives to poles and overhead wires. And I, is that ever come up or is that too late for this process or is it something totally different than what we would talk about?
No, it's absolutely appropriate. I'll be honest, I don't recall what your word says in terms of its utility placement. I think in the expansion on DOT roads, it is almost always placed underground. Now that's I know around here because again, we're in the triangle. I don't know how that translates out there. It's usually done when there's a road expansion. So I don't think that there's like an active effort to dig up and place existing utilities underground. However, especially with 107 going in and being expanded, I'm not sure how they're addressing their utility poles. And if that is indeed happening underground or not.
Real quick, Karen, is they, that was investigated during the process of 107 and the underground utilities so excessive to move those to underground. Because we have a lot going on. We have gas, power, phone, water sewer, all that, that would be in a for the a little bit wider right of way than it currently is. And it was, it was in excess of $20 million to do that. And there was just no way that was going to happen with that project already being funded. And Paige might be able to piggyback on this because she's probably been in other conversations, but that was investigated during that process. It's not a hard and fast rule that that happens automatically. It's, it's where it can happen and where it makes sense to do that, but it's not a requirement. And also I think in terms of requirements and for a municipality or county to do that, I think we would be fighting with the, the heavy lobby of the utility companies and the probably utility commission for the state on that. I don't know that there's anything that we can do to require screening of, of that or camouflage poles and so forth.
Thank you. And also in regards to the, the downtown area, I know that at several points in the past when they did the, the work on Main Street, a lot of the utilities were moved underground at that point. And, and so there, there has been progress along the way, but it's still, still a ways to go.
Thank you. Hope I did.
No, it's a great, it's a great question. I mean, I know, and again, when I've dealt with it, it's generally, it's generally done again with the road expansions or when a new right of way is being put in. So like in a new, say you were to get a subdivision of any, you know, significant size. Usually the, the utilities go underground when they're constructing it from scratch. It's just hard to go back and retrofit. As John said, that cost, you know, is prohibited. Okay. All right. And then just the last one on this page, article eight, talked about private signs on private property for elections that we had in the ordinance for 60 days prior to it and it was intended to be 30. Not sure that was just a typo or that was a carryover, but that was changed to 30 days prior to the election to be in line with the state legislation that for signs in the right of way were matching that. Okay.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Is there a sunset for those signs?
Yes. Yes. In the right of way there, I don't know if we wrote there, I'm not sure if there's a right, I'm not sure if there's a sunset for all of them. There should be. I will double check that. But there absolutely is for, I know for the ones in the right of way because they actually consider it, they consider it against policy or it's, it's a fine if you are caught removing a sign before that was legally placed. I think you have up until five days after, you're not allowed to touch the signs. And then after five days after the election, they need to be removed before 30 days. So I think it's five to 30 days after the election that they have to be removed. It's something, yeah, and I forget the specifics, but that's the new state legislation that they changed to address those signs. And I'll check it, what if it is on private property. I think we default. And I'll check it, what if it is on private property. I think we defaulted to what was, um, required by the state. So let me just take a note here real quick. Okay. All right. So this is where we're going to get into the meat of it. And I'm sorry having to listen to me talk for so long, but, um, one of the requirements and we'll just talk about here is the consistency. And our next slide talks about what the actual legislation states. So again, this is a lot of, you know, verbose language here, but, um, the North Carolina General Statute 160D 604 requires the following of planning boards in relation to reviewing zoning ordinance updates and changes. So subsection B of that section indicates subsequent to the initial adoption of a zoning regulation, all proposed amendments to the zoning regulation or zoning map shall be submitted to the planning board for review and comment. Here we are, um, subsection D says, um, when conducting a review of proposed zoning text or map amendments, the planning board shall advise and comment on whether the proposed action is consistent with any comprehensive plan that has been adopted. You do have a zoning plan, I mean, a comprehensive plan or a land use plan, um, and it's called the Plan for Silva 2040 Land Use Plan. So we're going to take a look at that in a little bit more detail on the next couple of slides. And then last, um, the planning board statement describing plan consistency may, now it doesn't have to do this, but it may address the overall rezoning and describe how the analysis and policies in the adopted plans were considered in the recommendations. So again, that's really talking more about how the policies were derived in the land use plan. So you don't really have to talk about that. But, um, depending on how involved you were in discussing your land use plan or developing those, um, policies, you can talk about that and add that into your statement. Okay. So, um, again, the proposed changes to the zoning and subdivision ordinance are very much in line with the goals, policies and actions of this land use plan. And we're going to go through and see specifically where the recommendations talk about incorporation of policies into the zoning ordinance. Um, and we again, the following slides are going to show you all that. So, um, over here on the right though, is the cover of the plan. And again, let's, let's talk about each of the goals. I apologize. These are, these slides are a little fuzzy, but it's simply because we just cut and pasted from the actual ordinance, um, the specific policies that, um, are relevant to what we're talking about tonight. So, uh, goal one is to maintain downtown Silva as a unique historic vibrant and attractive local and regional destination. Um, while there are a number of policies that go to that goal, the ones that were very specific to what we were doing, are, uh, Policies 1.4 and Policies 1.5, um, being that the private improvements, public and private improvements in downtown address amenities for bicyclists and pedestrians, including sidewalks, paths and enhanced streetscape elements. So one of the ordinance requirements now, um, is bicycle parking. So we've taken that as well as sidewalks and we're bringing that, um, again, to the entire community. Also, um, Action 1.1 says develop and new and strengthen existing zoning standards and design guidelines during Silva's zoning ordinance update. And as I mentioned earlier, we have taken some of those downtown, um, architectural standards and we've made them applicable throughout the entire community. So Silva has this character, um, just the, you know, this quaint little downtown and why, why just capture it there? Why not bring that out to 107 so that um, you're greeting your guests, um, your visitors, your residents, um, with that same sort of small town charm, um, out on the highway. So that's why we're bringing those goals and objectives, uh, there. All right. Goal two, establish the NC 107 corridors, a model corridor in southwestern North Carolina. Um, Policy 2.1 under that goal says ensure development projects along 107 use appropriate design strategies to provide a high quality public realm. And that's exactly what we were trying to achieve with that commercial corridor overlay. And that fits right in with zoning, or sorry, with Action 2.1, develop zoning standards and design guidelines during Silva zoning ordinance update. Goal three, to maintain a healthy balance in land uses between residential generators, workforce nodes and park open space. So, um, I just want to explain this a little bit because I know this causes some confusion. Um, land uses are basically broken up into, you think of your typical land uses as, um, residential, commercial, institutional, those types of things. Um, but being creative, we can talk about um, land uses really however we want to describe them as planners. Um, we talk about that. So a generator is basically any type of use that's going to generate trips. So work like, uh, places of employment are high trip generators. Um, if you had a destination entertainment center, that would be a generator. Um, your commercial shopping areas are generators. So that's what that word generator means there. So, um, maintaining that balance between residential, you're usually commercial generators, your workforce nodes, and then parks and open space. And Policy 3.2 fits in very well with our zoning ordinance update. Um, preserving open space to protect Silva's natural assets through the use of open space standards in the zoning ordinance. And we have incorporated um, those types of uses. Okay, goal four. Future development in Silva incorporates appropriate levels of density and designed to support increased housing options. The viability of neighborhood, commercial and over, overall long-term neighborhood sustainability. So we talked about, um, the recommended changes that we made in Article Four to your, um, development standard, I'm sorry, your, um, um, why am I blanking? Sorry, um, on your development standards, it's the, um, I'm cat caught my tongue. Um, the minimum lot size is your density. It talks about all those setbacks. And those requirements, um, will allow for a increased density. And, um, we've also again, created different zoning districts to allow for higher density uses. Um, encouraging the use of apartments, using the courage of the use of townhomes and those, um, variety in housing. So that talks about, uh, Policy 4.1, um, and Policy 4.3. And even Policy 4.2, ensure that the density intensity of development will be compatible with the general characteristic of the surrounding area in which development is located. Changes in density and intensity may be supported when there is enhanced viability, character and livability in the area. So again, um, we talked about this, we've set up the, the foundation for this and, um, goal four is one of those ones that I would expect the town to continue after our zoning process is completed. Um, to always go back and reevaluate that. Where do we want to see, um, you know, our certain zoning districts expanded? We didn't really discuss that when we, um, walked over our zoning map because we kind of just kept everything the same. And we were laying that foundation for where, um, that, you know, laying the foundation so that the tools are in place for the expansion of zoning districts or the expansion, um, or not even expansion, the increase in density or decrease in density in certain zoning districts. Right. We have two more goals to go. So goal five, the physical character and identity of Silva is maintained through a degree of aesthetic and quality development, through a high degree of aesthetic and quality development, sorry. Require that the location, size, number and appearance of signage throughout the community is appropriately regulated. Um, and again, obviously Action 5.1, update the zoning code to ensure sufficient design standards, landscape, upper screening and development amenities are addressed in all development projects. And I think we put a lot of focus in the ordinance on these, um, design standards, um, so that we can provide those types of protections for your community. And then last but not least, land use plan goal six, new development and redevelopment projects incorporate creative site design. And this is where I think I had mentioned earlier in the presentation, we talked about the use of conditional zoning. Conditional zoning is one of those things that promotes mixed use. Um, and that is Policy 6.1, promote and encourage a mix of residential unit styles, values and densities within the same development. Um, the incorporation of having commercial or, um, retail or office uses with residential above, um, those types of walkability and small town community, um, to bring, you know, your community together, tie that in with sidewalks and landscaping, um, all to build your community character. All right. Again, I'll just take a breath here. Does anybody have any questions regarding that? Jeffrey?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you were talking about signage and I was looking at, um, advertising signs. It was section 4.3, um, B8, pages four to six. And it talked about, um, no advertising signs. And I wondered what that meant. And, and obviously if it's a business, you want to advertise your own business at that location. So was that trying to get at no offsite advertising, off-premise advertising signs? Is that what?
Probably I will have to go back and look at that specific section. I don't. We did add in language and maybe there's a typo or maybe it got trans. I'm not sure. I will have to go back and look at that specific section. But yes, we did create a section about, um, off, um, off-premise signs. Um, and that was to address a property that might be landlocked and the only way you can get to it is through a driveway or an access easement that doesn't have specifically like road frontage where they can put a sign. Um, so we allow that type of development to be able to put a sign out front with like an easement on an adjacent property. But we're trying to, um, get rid of the sign like as you're pulling into town that says, you know, I don't even know if you have a, I don't even know if they exist, Holiday Inn, you know, two miles up on the right-hand side.
Um, those, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to call it a specific business. I'm just saying.
No, 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 I mean, it wasn't Holiday Inn, but we have that kind of sign.
Yes, and we're trying to prohibit that kind of signs. So that signage is not, not allowed. So we're getting rid of that off-premise signs. Um, and last, the only exception to that was wayfinding signs that are approved by the town that the town has with their logo and those types of things that fit into their sign plan. Um, that are approved by DOT and along those, those, um, along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll look into that section 4.3 to make sure that's worded correctly because it might just have, um, at a typo or may not have been worded the right way or mid method intent. All right. So moving forward. All right. So tonight, planning board. So we are asking that you make a recommendation this evening, uh, to either approve or deny. Um, we'd like you to make a, a statement as to the consistency of the land use plan. Um, and then your approval or denial or somewhere in between can be conditioned or you can um, make your recommendation subject to some of the items we've talked about. You know, clarifying what's in section 4.3 or making sure that political signs daylight at 30 days or things like that. So any of the things we've discussed tonight, um, if there's another discussion item or question that comes up before the end of the meeting, um, we can, you know, again, condition or, you know, make it subject to. There is time to address these issues. Um, this is the first step. Planning board is the first step to make this review and recommendation. It will then go, um, I'm sorry, let me just go over, the next slide goes over what goes next. Um, but so tonight we're going to ask again for a recommendation. Um, you're going to forward those written comments to the Board of Commissioners. And then where it happens next, this is the next steps after tonight. Um, there'll be a public hearing on February 10th before the Board of Commissioners. That's when, so we have until February 10th to still incorporate some of the changes that were made or discussed tonight to make sure that we're addressing all those typos to make sure, um, all of our formatting is correct. The formatting changes you can still do after the fact, but we'd like to have all content changes done, um, again, in our first draft to go before, um, that public hearing on February 10th. But that's not, we can still make some changes after that. We just hope not to make content changes after that. Um, at that public hearing, we'll review the information, very similar presentation to tonight that will be made to again, to the public as well as the Board of Commissioners. You're going to hear about the zoning map and then we'll hopefully hear from the public, um, any public comment. Um, the board should consider your recommendations, um, that you make tonight. And then, um, they're going to review the ordinance in relation to the comp plan, just like you did. Um, we're going to talk about house, again, this consistency statements and how, um, they find it because they actually have to approve a consistency statement. And they also approve a reasonableness statement to say that the zoning changes are reasonable and then changes to the map are reasonable and in line with community goals. Then they'll close that hearing and then at their next meeting, um, on February 24th, the Board of Commissioners will hopefully take their vote. And then, um, again, hopefully with that, they will also approve their consistency statement as well as their statement of reasonableness. And that gets approved by ordinance, um, if they vote to approve that. And then, um, it will either become effective immediately or effective on a, an effective date. We haven't set that yet. Um, so it'll either be again, effective the date it's adopted or we'll set an effective date, maybe like March 1st. But that's how that will play out. So does anybody have any questions on the procedures or anything like that? Okay. All right. So I don't have anything else to, I'm sorry, you guys didn't get to see that my screen was promoted, was changing, but yours was not. I'm so sorry about that. Okay. There was all the information that you needed to see. So that's the, um, plan moving forward. Um, and then I guess I'll just open it up for questions or comments and we can discuss anything that is still outstanding or that you have questions about. If you found any other typos, let me know.
I have a question.
Sure.
If during those next steps with the other boards, if they come through with substantial changes or modifications, does that come back to us at all? Or do we just?
It should. That'll be a call on the staff's hat behalf, whether that will, I mean, if there's something substantial, it, it makes the most sense to come back to the planning board. I would, I would feel most comfortable if there is a huge policy change that it would come back to the, the planning board.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Uh, Karen, I did have one other little, um, thing on section 5.4 on the chicken, chicken keeping.
Yes.
Um, the, it, it's a top, it has five written out, but in parentheses, it has the number 10. So it's just an inconsistency there.
It is 10 hens. It might have, it was five hens originally and we upped it to 10, uh, based on some of the discussion at the planning, uh, one of those workshops.
Yeah, that's actually good.
Okay, just so you know, it is 10. I think it was 10. Or maybe did we say eight? I think it's eight. I'll double check. It's either eight or 10. I did go with 10. Melissa, you should know, what was that? I'm sorry.
Elsewhere it says 10.
It's 10. Okay, then it's 10.
In that same chicken area.
Yeah, okay. It's 10.
Um, I had a question about, let me find it. It's on page 18. It's talking about the planning board being a preliminary forum for the quasi judicial decisions.
Okay.
That eliminated that completely or we?
Yes, we did. Is, where was that in?
Um, page 18, it's section 2.4 C 3.
Okay, I think that's the one we just changed.
Is it? Okay.
I think I'm pretty sure that got changed, but I will double check. That's the one we called.
Yeah, it says to provide a preliminary forum for review of quasi judicial decisions, provided that no part of the forum or recommendation may be used as a basis for the deciding board. So we're not going to be a preliminary.
That's, no, right, no. And that, that's under the duties of the planning board.
Yeah.
Yes, that was removed. Yeah.
Okay. Um, in the usage table, it looks like there is, there's still asterisks within the table, but the asterisk at the bottom of the table, you know, it's leaving asterisk as for is, is removed. Do we need to replace that text or is it just, do we need to just take the asterisks out?
I saw that today when I was going through it and I made myself a note to go back and I never did. So I will, um, double check that, but most likely those asterisks will get removed because that talked, that spoke of, uh, those uses were, it was talking about accessory, those asterisks should have been only with accessory structures. And originally we had, we removed the requirement or we, we created supplemental standards for accessory structure, accessory structures. So, um, I believe that asterisks will just get removed.
Okay. Uh, in the section for essential services, class one and two, there's a lot of that that was removed. I'm wondering if you could talk about why, why that was removed or we're just. It's like page one thirteen.
Yes, so um, a lot of the stuff that was in essential services was related to. Cell towers. Uh, and so that um, we have adopted the or what you will be adopting. I think you actually currently are adopt, have adopted the Jackson County um, telecommunications ordinance. So those. Preempt it. So they were not needed because um, you're following the Jackson County one. So that's why those were removed.
So that's covered under that Jackson County.
Okay.
Yes.
Greg, Gregory, did you have a? Another question?
Jeffrey, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I I'm sorry. I'm looking, maybe there was another Gregory here. Yeah, a quick question on the um, maybe this come up in discussion before, I don't remember. It's the section one ten about. When a business is noncompliant. And they have to close for renovations or repairs or something. It's only a fourteen day window. And if they're closed for more than fourteen days, then they have to be come into compliance. And I thought. It seemed kind of short. I don't know where that fourteen day. Period came from. C three, I think it is. And I, especially with with COVID and stuff, I, you know, I was thinking about some of these businesses that may shut down for. You know, three weeks or more for whatever reason and then. If they happen to be out of compliance in certain areas, does that force them to reopen? And then come into come to compliance at the same time.
That is a short window. That's what's in our current ordinance and it was reduced when. When certain businesses would check, would. Either. Close, sell. Only operate a certain percentage. It was just to try to bring. Bring the business into compliance as far as. Outdated signs. That was one reason we really looked at it. One, trying to get additional sidewalks in. Just a way to try to capture the businesses that were built. Prior to the original zoning ordinance.
Okay. And that's been working out. I mean, have many businesses fallen under that?
Yes, most of them have come into compliance. Um, when we had it at thirty days. We didn't have as strong of compliance as we did with fourteen.
Oh, okay. Alright. I didn't know if that was a hardship or not, but thank you.
It might be, but at this point, it's been. Well, since nineteen ninety eight, since the original ordinance was update was passed. So most have replaced the signs or done a significant modification to their premises. That they would have, that would have triggered compliance anyways. So the fourteen days was just a last. Attempt to get some of those into the current ordinance.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions or comments?
Yes. Um, looking at sections, I'm look, I was reading about the commercial corridor overlay. So looking at sections four point three. And six point one seven. I understand from that that. That like all the setbacks in the CCO are reduced to twenty five feet. And that there's no open space requirements in the commercial corridor overlay. Is that correct?
We did reduce the setbacks to twenty five feet, yes. Um, I forget on the. Uh, open space because we did have some discussion about that. So I honestly don't remember. I will go back and look at to what those. Requirements are. I know we talked about allowing them to have reduced, I mean. There was the, the discussion was, and we can have that discussion again. The commercial corridor overlay is obviously gonna have a higher intensity of use and a higher percentage of impervious surfaces. As such, um, it also being on a, you know, slope surface with, you know, there's definitely, you know, steep grades along there. Does that increase runoff? Does that, you know, i- is there more of a need for open space along that commercial corridor than eliminating the need? For open space that's required elsewhere. So there was that discussion and I honestly do not remember how we left it. In there, but I can take a look and get back to you on that. Um, does it say that there's no reopen space in there? Or is it just apps, is it just silent on it? That section. Does someone, do we wanna have a slight discussion and just say like, how do we feel about that? Like, what's the, what's the gut reaction? On that area?
Um, seems like. For um, along the one oh seven there, the concern was. That I believe it originally was in at a hundred foot setback. And that with the geography there and the, the road widening and and all, it was gonna be too restrictive. So. I don't remember exactly how we came up to the twenty five.
Uh, the, yeah, the twenty, I can tell you how we did came up with the twenty five. The hundred was absolutely too large of a setback. Like we just, I I don't understand that might have just, excuse me, I I don't, it was an arbitrary number, but I'm not sure where that, how that. It came up. Because once you look at the corridor, it's very obvious that a hundred is too large. The reason twenty five was picked was allowing for two way traffic if um. If there's circulation in a shared driveway without having parking in the front allows for two way traffic. Um, in front of a building, so that if someone pulls off, there would still be enough sufficient space. For um, two cars or one, you know, slowly passing through or driveway. Um, with maybe some parallel parking if you needed it um, to have connected driveways. So that was the twenty five foot. Discussion.
Okay, I found the section that I was talking about. So it says, development within the downtown business and commercial corridor overlay zoning district shall be exempt. From the open space requirements contained herein. But shall comply with the requirements for preservation of water areas. So it's not that I'm necessarily opposed to the setback or the, the exemption from the open space requirements. I was just surprised to see that, not the setback part, but the. Exemption from the open space requirement. Um, I think when we talked about. That in the joint meeting, there was some discussion like this is a major area for runoff.
Right.
Runoff generation, so reducing the open space will increase the runoff. So.
Right, I'm I'm and and the reasoning it's not in the downtown business is obviously because it's already, it's built, so there is no. Oh, there's no open space to provide there. So and I think the thought process in saying that it was exempt was to allow for the largest amount of. You know, occupation by businesses, you know, it's your most expensive properties because it's along your business corridor. So. It it was more meant as a probably an economic development decision, but I completely agree that. You know, in areas of high runoff around there and again, with such the high impervious surface, having open space provided in that district. Is not necessarily a bad thing. It would be a good thing. But it's really, I mean, it is, it's that way those, way those um, options there of. You know, do you wanna? Take your space and provide open space which might be needed, but again, if they still have to provide for. Environmental concerns, they're not gonna be able to build on any steep slopes or any water areas. So that might. That might be sufficient. Jeffrey, I know you had a question or comment.
Well, I was, I was just thinking that the variance proceeding, businesses that were under hardship trying to comply with. Some of these measurements could. Appeal to with the variance and try to make mitigation in some other way. Without. You know. Too much cost. Or, you know, find another solution as opposed to.
Yes, and in the commercial corridor. I was gonna say, in the commercial corridor overlay, there is significant relief options, especially for the parking. That there are like four or five different options. Allow uh, the zoning administrator to have some. Flexibility in allowing. Or or giving him some um, allowance in giving flexibility to people. Or business owners who cannot accommodate those based on the um, layout of the lot. But it comes back down to that question of, I think the twenty five foot setback was agreeable to most. Um, but we just wanna have to talk about that open space. Um, it's not. It's not a ma- massive change to the ordinance, but it is a policy change. So. I I don't think we ever, anyone came out one way or another extremely. I don't remember any of the board members really saying it must be this way or it must not be this way, but. I'm happy to hear. Melissa, it sounds like you're leaning towards putting it back in and and requiring it.
I I am gen, I'm in for open space in general and um, I do think we're gonna be seeing more heavy rain events. You know, in the, in the near future, so. It's just something I thought would be good to discuss. And I wonder, John, I think you had brought up that, that. When we were discussing this before, that that would be a major. Contributed, contrib- contrib- area of contribution to the runoff. Um, do you think having the open space requirement eliminated? Would make a big difference or?
We, I don't, I don't believe that it is. If you look in that under purpose, number one in that section. Commercial corridor overlay. Uh, that second paragraph on page four dash four. Um, it specifically says that. The. The development of all uses permitted by right or by special use permit in the underlying district, if any, shall be subject to the requirements of both districts. Um, in the event that CCO requirements conflict with the underlying district requirements, requirements that CCO should take precedent. But it's, it says in there that the underlying district. The requirements uh, also are in play. So um, there's probably just some wording and some conflict there that we. Probably just need to cipher through and we can do that and and. Get a, you know, I, we'll work Karen and Paige, we'll work together on that and see what uh. We can come up with, but no, I don't think the intent was to get rid of open space whatsoever. Um, it was, I think, really those, those overlay districts are really. Set up to be. Kind of incentive based. Um, so if you give a little here, you know, you can take a little there, but it's not, it's not to just have. Car launch, do whatever you want. So um, we'll just try to clean that up. Um, so it's a little clearer.
So John, can you get with Karen and Paige and take a look at that?
Yes, we will.
Alan, did you have a question? I know I saw your. For a second.
No, I mean, John, John answered the question. I was trying to see where that point was and. And see where that is and and how the conflict was there. I'm not. Not too concerned about the open space on that corridor of one oh seven out through there. Cause I think it's just a. It's just the, the design parameters of what's gonna be buildable and not buildable will, I mean, I think dictate what you can and can't do in that area.
I would agree. And that's what I was saying, like, I think the environmental areas in that. You know, the slopes, the, the wet areas that are there are going to, you know, that will. That might meet the open space requirements anyway. So you might, th- those business owners may not have to provide additional. Open space because it may already be provided with environmental constraints.
Correct.
Okay, but we will go back and look at that section and make sure that the, you know, that elimination of, you know, the overriding that it's not required in the CCO. Is removed.
Any other questions? Or comments?
So Karen, if I had found typos that uh. Do not affect the content, I can submit those to you afterwards and I, we don't need to necessarily discuss them. Okay.
Yes, please though, please submit them to me. I I I, every time I open it, I'm like, I missed another one. I missed another one. So.
The huge document, so.
Yes, and I'm sorry. And we've had, we've had it proofread twice and we still catch them, so I'm so sorry. Alright, any other like, could discussion about? You know, a policy change over what we have currently or what you see in the document. That may affect some, like a discussion that we might need to bring to. The Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so if there are no other comments on that. Like Melissa said, if if we can just, uh, if we have any just simple typos, misspellings or whatever, just send those in. Those can still be corrected. But I wanted to make one last call and make sure no one else has any other questions. Okay, if none. Paige, would you guide us through this? The what, do we just need to have a uh, motion to recommend? Sending this on to the. The board.
Is that what we need, Karen? Yes, I sent over a, you know, a similar, a draft um, sample or um, sample. Motion to make if somebody would um, the motion or there should be some discussion on behalf of the board as to the consistency. Of um. The zoning ordinance with the comprehensive plan or the land use plan. Um, but that's really the only thing that has to be in there, but you do, you should recommend either, like I said, approval or denial. Um, and again, if you wanna follow that. Script to say, um, that should include everything that you need to discuss. As part of your. Motion. Do you want me to? You have that page?
I was trying to pull it up.
Yes, I I must have missed that. I didn't see that.
It came in today.
That was my thought. I think I, I thought it was for the town board.
I can, again, I can share screen.
Yes, it'd be great. Thank you.
People in the back can see. So again, this is just some draft language. If you can, can everyone read that? I'm sorry, I. My old eyes are going. But it's just a dra, it's a sample language. It just says that you're going to recommend approval. We're, we're keeping fingers crossed everybody is on board with this. We've been looking at this for almost over, well, over a year now. And a lot of work has gone into it, so um, recommending approval. And the draft, based on the draft that you were most recently received and the town zoning map. And then indicating that it's in compliance. Um, with the requirements of one sixty D and consistent with the goals, policies and actions of the comprehensive plan or the land use plan, I'm sorry. And then those were three of the, I I just pulled out three specific uh, policies and actions that it was in compliance with. But you can really use any of the policies that we discussed. And then if there's any of the corrections that you wanna like. You know, say the motion is subject to the following and that, you know, any of those things we discussed tonight, you can add in there. So I'll leave that up there. You guys can talk.
Okay, can everyone see that? If you are able to to read through that. Um, if everyone can see that, would someone like to make a, make this motion? Um, if everyone can see that, would someone like to make a, make this motion? Or another motion if you would care to is.
I'll make a motion that this. Yeah, I'll do, I'll make a motion that the Silver Planning Board recommend approval. Or does anybody have a question before I make the motion? I don't know, Jeffrey, if you, if you had a question?
Yeah, I just had a question about how we would deal with those things at the bottom regarding, you know, typos or clarifications that we submit after this motion.
Can we just say pending the correction, the suggestions made in this meeting, can we make a general statement? Karen?
I would think that's fine. Paige, I don't see any problem with that, right? Hey.
Okay. All right, so like, uh, I'll make a motion that uh the Silver Planning Board would recommend approval of the zoning and subdivision ordinance. Of the town of Silver, North Carolina, the draft of which is dated January twenty twenty-two and the town of Silver zoning map. The ordinance is in compliance with the requirements of NCGS one sixty D and is consistent with the goals and policies and the, and the actions of the plan of Silver twenty forty land use plan. Specifically, action one point one, develop new and s- and strengthen existing zoning standards and design guidelines during Silver's zoning ordinance update. Goal two, to establish the North Carolina one oh seven corridor as a model corridor in the, in southwestern North Carolina. And policy four point two, which ensures that the density and intensity of the development will be compatible with the general characteristics of the surrounding area in which development is located. And it's understood that the corrections, um, the board would like to address and will also be. Um, due to the, the items discussed in today's meeting and um all out outstanding items that are documented in. In the boards and the ta- and planning board's minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, I didn't see, was that you, Russ? Okay. Uh, okay, um, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No, I don't have.
Okay, if not.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, yes, Gregory.
Jeffrey, uh, does this, does this motion um? And that had. Statement at the end accommodate um any pending um clarifications and editing of. The text, non-substantive. Now those were approving it, but we're also acknowledging that. Some points might be made more clear or revisited or um. Typos, that kind of thing. Is this, does this, does this motion accommodate that kind of activity between now and the, the time when this document goes to the next level? I mean, if it does, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure we're, we're, that the motion is all inclusive in that sense.
That was the intent of, that was the intent of my motion. If I need to clarify that anymore, Paige or Karen, let me know.
Okay, understood, yeah.
The only thing I would say is if you wanted to add on the part, if something of substantive, you know, substantial change. That it would be revisited to the planning board. That would be the only thing you could possibly add on. I think your motion addressed all typos and anything that we discussed tonight.
Okay, just want, just clarifying. Thank you.
And then, of course, once this is sent to the Board of Adjustments, they would have the opportunity to make any additional changes there. Is that correct?
The commissioners, yes. It won't go to Board of Adjustment. It'll just go to Board of Commissioners. But yes.
But they're the fu- they're the final say, so they can add and subtract anything they would like.
Okay, a- any further discussion? Okay, if not, um, Amanda, would you do the roll call, please?
Russ?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. So the, this will be sent to the town board, the Board of Adjustments, and uh. Uh, as Karen mentioned, there'll be the public hearing on February tenth as well. Okay. Well, that was the only thing we had on our agenda for today, nothing else. And so. Thank you, everyone, for uh working our way through this and all of your input on this. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Karen. Can, thank you, Karen, for all your, and you and in your team, your hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it's, it's only as good as um all of you. I mean, you really put in the effort to read it. Keep this on our toes and I appreciate it. You guys have a great ordinance.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all very much. Um, uh, if nothing else, can I uh entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Amanda, if you will call the roll, please.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes. Okay, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Again, it's uh been a long process and we do appreciate it. Karen, your help and of course Paige and Amanda and John as well. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.